Okay.
All right, let's keep going. So we welcome everybody to our planning commission meeting for the 12th of August. Welcome everybody here and we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. Stand and follow me. Thank you. Um, starting down the list, approval of the minutes from the May 7th meeting. I'll have a chance to look at that and send any corrections back to Dory.
I'll just add one thing quickly. I today, because I did get a chance to last week, add the specific quote sections to the last motion that Tim Giants made about the variance process. So I just added those, the right quote sections in there. But those weren't in there earlier. So it's not, it's on Dropbox now. It is.
That's what.
In, yeah. So it's right now.
Okay. That being said, I would entertain a motion unless there's some other corrections. Okay, with correction please. I have a second. Yes, I'll second. I have a motion in a second. Bye, so four of us. Okay. Now, next in line is the public hearing for the agriculture, establishment of the agriculture tourism zone. Added in section 15 dot 38 of Kansas City Municipal Code. So we open that to a public hearing. Is there anything you'd like us with?
Um, I'll just summarize it for those public hearers listening, um, just to go over what we've talked about because this is the kind of a working document for us for the last, uh, we've had a couple of work sessions with council and planning commission regarding an annexation that we're doing, uh, just west of our boundary, 48, uh, to include up to include the new dollar that farm parcel over there. Um, so in doing so, we were kind of left with how to zone this particular property because it didn't really fit in any zone that we had currently. Um, and we talked about our current entry corridor zone that's a commercial zone. Um, and trying to amend it to allow for what they're trying to do, which is pretty specific ag tourism related uh, use. And then we talked about also creating an ag 10 zone or creating an ag 10 zone that's what they are in the county. Uh, and then allowing ag tourism into that. Uh, but none of that really fit with what we wanted to do because we really don't want to see residential, um, in that area. So, uh, our, where we ended up was to create an ag tourism zone that didn't allow residential that really focuses on, uh, I'll just read the purpose, that works to support advanced Kansas City's modern farm and historic ways of farming by maintaining viable, small-scale, sustainable agricultural operations and their central role setting. The regulations accommodate a variety of uses that are complementary and accessory to unique agricultural pursuits. They encourage residents and visitors to learn more about the agriculture, more about agriculture by allowing it to be supported and supported uses onwardly terms. These regulations also include provisions to protect adjacent residential agricultural uses. So, um, we've been working on this ag tourism zone and creating, uh, creating its own zone and modified to meet what, what we're looking to do here. So tonight, um, we have kind of the final edits of this ag tourism zone. And it's ready for any feedback from the planning mission in public. Should maybe any, and then, um, if everything looks good, if we appear to have any changes, planning mission wants to make. Um, if planning mission doesn't feel like starting to report, we can table it. Or if planning mission doesn't feel like they don't like it any longer, we can deny it.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Scott, anything that you need to share with us before we open this to the public?
And then I will say I got some edits in time today too. So when we go through it, I'll, I'll highlight what Tim had. And I talked about, and then any other queries.
Okay. Scott?
No.
Nope, you're good.
Let's speak out loud.
Nope. All right, with that, um, I would open this up for the, for public, this public hearing opened it up for comments from the public. Okay. If you want to come up.
Uh, sure. My name is Dan Sterm. I thank you for giving us a chance to speak. I'm going to throw a curve ball at you guys a little bit, and that is, we are in Garf Ranch, which is fairly close to this area right here. And currently the running cattle, uh, in that area, we have agricultural rates because of that. Now, what's happening is there's this development called West Hills, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And the gentleman in charge of that wants to chop up the area into very small pieces and build, you know, uh, townhomes, uh, apartment buildings, just a whole slew of things, thousands of people. And we have beautiful 40 acre parcels. We're running cattle and we want to continue doing that. And so my thought was, is there a way to kind of look at this and see, because you had mentioned adjacent parcels. This essentially is an adjacent area and maybe add that to what you're doing here for, uh, for cattle or for something like that. It's just something I thought I'd throw out to you guys, uh, as an, as a possibility. So again, a curve ball, I know it's not what you're dealing with, but, uh, you know, this really is going to impact this area tremendously, what, what they're planning. Just a, just a thought.
So you're talking about the West Hills?
The West Hills, yes, definitely. And we're opposed to it. We're not, we don't want to see this happen, yeah.
Yeah, probably everybody else will listen to this down.
Yes.
But I, but I do have, just have, just one comment before you, I, I thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
Right, I appreciate it. When we actually have people out here, it's awesome in a public hearing.
Yeah.
I can tell you that your, your thoughts and your requests are, are really noted.
Okay.
Not pertaining to this public hearing at all, but giving you a chance to speak, but that, absolutely. Um, but yeah.
Okay.
That's part of the reason we're kind of doing what we're doing, so we can keep, let something like this come in, but, but have control.
Well, we have a large group of homeowners in the area as well as, uh, property owners that feel the same way. So if you wanted to pursue this a little bit, we'd be happy to meet and discuss this in further detail.
Are you meaning annexation or?
Uh, there's a few, you know, options I think that would be out there, but annexation could be one of them.
Uh.
It's, it's a possibility. Incorporation, you know, that kind of thing. Oh, no? Okay. Like I said, there's, there's options, so. But, uh, what they're planning is extremely disruptive and it doesn't align with anything in this area. And because of the state, uh, the rules at the state, uh, which are very liberal for builders, at this point, they're sort of pushing their way through without a lot of resistance. And so we're just thinking out loud, how do we protect Camas and how do we protect the, the citizens of Camas? Uh, and align, you know, our, our objectives together. So that's, that's pretty much it, yeah.
Appreciate, appreciate you speaking like that.
Thank you.
I only have one question.
Okay.
About why you did that. Is, is there a possibility in annexation? If, could that, is the zone you're setting up for Valerina a zone that is a geographical zone or is just a zoning?
Um, that's a good question.
What do you, what do you think, okay, well, you know, the degree, um, if we, if you had that agriculture, how would you call it? Agricultural education, education, agricultural, and I know it's, it's in a way to have some commercialism and people multitasking on their land. What if, could you do that on as you're coming down, if we were able to annex? So Valerina's over here, but what if you did along the 48 coming down? Because that's part of the property that this land rent is going on.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be a fixed geographical location. It could be more a use code that you could apply to areas like ours.
Or upfront, you know, I mean, then we're, we're kind of offering out, but you have to do it in, in, in that zoning, uh, in that zoning code. Um, does that make sense? Or am I speaking?
Yes.
Okay.
So it could be, uh, you know, it could be applied, we can apply zones anywhere that the council wants to. If we annex on a property, that's how we decide zoning at that time. So, um, if we were to potentially annex, we would, that would be part of the processes to consider.
Okay.
So I don't think it's a matter of that.
No, it does actually in some of the, in, in what, some of the, some of the individuals that may not be at their same neutral, but some of their business models are going towards that. You might be, when, when saying, hey, you could do this.
Right.
So that would, that would be unusual to say zone some commercial or certain distance off. You could put it up, but, um, for the wood then, um, those lots and later out of 48 or lots wouldn't be out of reason to, for those to be zoned or a 40.
Or the ones that are.
Are made for zoning initially or that, and from that.
Yeah.
And from that type of thing. But again, I'm speaking with our vote on the council, but just information.
It's just information to pass on and ideas to have. Okay.
And I'm not, I'm just going to give you my thoughts too. If, in my opinion, if we were to annex something like that, um, it would be at the least possible density. So A40 would, that's what we would keep it annexed in. We wouldn't make it any smaller. And I, that's my personal thought. I can't.
Well, if we can't stop them, do we at least make it Napa Valley, not Tampa, Napa?
There you go. The other, the other thing to consider in this, this has to do with this opening space, um, that was going past, but, but if you get a conservation using on a property, then zoning is kind of irrelevant.
Yeah.
Okay.
How do you do something like that?
Well, you apply through some group to, um, assess your development value and, and it's 48, I don't know what it's zoning in the county, but.
40.
So your development value is already been expired, but if you build, so I don't know that that often goes.
Oh, okay.
But, but in the meadows, if it's A10 and you have a conservation, it's not going to develop. Part of that is gone, anyway.
It restricts the rights, huh?
It develops.
Okay. Any having?
As we, we fill your vein. We're, we're aligned. Let's just put away the guy.
Thank you, thank you.
We might actually have physically aligned and lock arms and stand around you. Anyway, enough of that.
Okay. Any other comment? If not, I would very much, we'll close it. We'll just close the, a motion to close the public hearing. We're just going to close the public hearing for the agriculture tourism zone. Now, uh, to the council. Commission, sorry, commission. Can we, so any thoughts? I'm assuming everybody had a chance to read through their, Kim to make some corrections.
Can I ask just one quick question? It may have done one of your corrections. On number two, it's third line says not exceed 20, and then in parentheses it says 50%.
Oh.
So I don't know if it's 20 or 50.
Yeah, I would see. You guys, 50, the only one that I.
50.
I think our last meeting, we discussed, they kind of supposed to be.
That's definitely.
So it's probably an oversight on.
I figured it was just an oversight here, but I just didn't know which one he's, he's selling on, okay.
Okay.
Um, and then Tim caught one in number one. I had listed, um, two pro sections, 15 on 318, 18. I mistaken, I needed to put 1521 instead of 1518. So that just needs to be changed, which, which we can.
Yeah, that's highlighted on mine. Any other corrections that we looked at that is found that we need to go over?
Um, and then on 1538 050, Tim had on number three, agriculture is the, I can't remember what the word was.
Preferred.
Now we changed it to primary.
I suggested primary.
Yeah. Um.
Well, if it's not, if it's not primary, what's the purpose of, of all of it? Preferred implies that we could, maybe open up to something else. So I, I just felt like primary was more descriptive of what we're asking for.
And then Tim has some definitions. I'll ask him to share when we get there for community garden and petting zoo. Or petting farm and zoo, but we have some discussion on those pieces too. Um, whether or not we want to park. I mean, it's okay if they're allowed uses, community gardens and petting. Tim bought no zoo, petting farm only. Um, my thought is, I don't know that we need to necessarily park, particularly, I don't know that we need to park petting farm. Because in my opinion, if you're going there, you're going there to get, you're going there to get a product or eat at a restaurant or, you know, whatever it is. You're not going there specifically to pet an animal. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know that it's ever going to be the primary use of a property, in my opinion. I think it could be in a lot of use of, of the ag tourism zone. There are a lot of, you know, kind of pet animals that we want, but it's not, I, Tim, in my opinion, it's not really a primary use that it needs to be parked for, but, but I can see what you guys thought about that. And then community garden, Tim had a parking standard for that that he thought about. Um, I, you know, we kind of talked about how it was never going to be a big party needed, you know.
It depends how many plots they actually would incorporate to, you know, plenty plots of small gardens, spots you might, you might want potentially to even park. But realistically, you know, a couple of spots for a whole thing, it's going to take care of it. So I don't know.
My only concern with that is going to be that the event, what do they call it, events center thing, whatever. Um, I think hanging out with the reception center, that could potentially raise the new hold there.
Swan, Amanda, you want to go down, start from the top of the through and just make any corrections that we want to, or do you want, just hit like we're going? You, you tell me how you want to do this.
Um, let's just go through and each section, you guys can tell me if we have any other changes. So, so we can just go through section to section.
Perfect. Let's do it.
Um, anything for the purpose, 1538 010?
No, what? Not for me. I thought it, it had the purpose.
Um, 020.
Thank you, Wendy. We put up that in the comments. It's the 15 dot 21 change and then the 15% change down in section two.
Yep, I got that correct.
Not in section three or four. Um, seven to, seven to 10 on four hours of operation. That, that's pretty standard, isn't it? Seven to 10.
That's what we talked about the last work session was, um, I think we have changed that.
That doesn't limit all activity though, just major activity.
Just like the, yeah, not, it says it's not including actual farming activities, so.
So, so, yeah, so I guess my question there would be, so if they had something in, in the event center that went past 10 o'clock, is that a violation or is that?
I would say so. We don't allow people to use ours, I think. That's our, always orders.
Okay, all right.
Unless we feel differently about it being out there.
No, I'd like to say, I just wanted to make sure that we were, we understood.
We didn't call this 1538, 102, 1024.
Okay.
Right.
Perfect. Yeah.
Um, anything for about the center 1538?
And again, I'm just going to kind of throw this out there. This is kind of follow in suit with what our, what our codes are, no. Scott's looking like.
Yeah, it follows the.
This is from the I5 zone.
Okay, all right. That was my only question.
One small concern I have, and I'm not, just because I don't fully envision what they're looking at there, you know, when you look at the old 40 fencing, talk about electrical, um, if in fact this is like a, um, gathering spot for, you know, families and kids, I'm not sure that there's a great, you know, for electric fence on, for, you know, even kids around and things like that, but.
I think we need to get back to a little of that.
Only if we can video. No.
We talked about the fencing a little bit at the last work session and we got rid of the laser.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
It, it still has it there, right? Though for eight foot, you know, on four reason.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
We can get rid of that.
Yeah.
I guess I just, if in fact this is like a tourism area with, you know, people inside, we want to make sure it's. The people are protected, not just the animal puts from the fence, so.
I feel like also, if it were, I mean, I know this one's not a huge property, but a lot of people do rotational grazing and I don't know. Yeah. I don't know if we want to limit them on our land to not being able to do that. So I don't know. We could have an asterisk and say, you know, not like the development activity center, which is what we call the, like, main part of what was happening. We call that the development activity center. So we can have an asterisk and say, you know, just not in that portion, maybe you can put, you know, your pasture.
I guess my problem is, is I, I'm looking at this code purely from the project they have rather than the code from the overall perspective of other features. So you're right. Now, you know what I mean? In other words, I'm, I'm having a hard time separating the two as we're moving through this for, for the current purpose I have, but you're right.
So we'll lose the eight foot right here.
I'll, I'll leave that right there.
Okay. And I mean, I'm, I'm okay with leaving the electric as it is. I mean, we can put it, something down on the bottom if we need to, but I.
She is right. I, I mean, this, this, this is a zone, not just one, but yeah, right.
So we good with it?
Yeah.
So we what? 38 on.
1538 050. I need to bold that one. Oh, I know we lost, mistake.
All right.
And then Tim and I made that change to the, the number three. I just can't really say it from my, can't make that change.
No, Tim, Tim asked, you did work. It's a joint venture.
Anything else on that one?
I'm good. Yes.
Okay. Um, parking table. Thoughts on the table as a whole and then thoughts on the two highlighted pieces?
Personally, I think overall, I think we're about where we need to be. Parking wise. And I look at it kind of like the one over midway, right? There are certain times where you can't find a place to park. And then there's times where there's nobody there, right? I think it's just kind of part of the nature of the beast. I don't know how you, how you prepare for something like that.
Yeah.
It's like, I mean, I'm sure over there in next month, you can't find a place to park, right? But all summer long, it's usually not a problem.
Yeah.
So I, I, I did come. Anybody got any other thoughts for the community garden?
And my, my only thoughts is that, you know, is that whatever they do needs to be always self-sustained so that when another commercial business moves there next door, overload doesn't burden the neighbors. That's my only concern from that bigger perspective, so. I don't know that we know the magic number, but I guess that's up to the neighbors next door to post their parking.
But I do have a question and I've been trying to figure this out. So the creamery, where I'm assuming they're going to sell cheese, whatever, or is that strictly sold out of the restaurant, cafe, the retail, what? I'm trying to remember how that all played out. Yeah, it, it, and, and like I said, yeah, down to Beaver, it's all one, so they're all, I mean, if you have this for, you actually have more parking. So I don't.
I don't have those applied on here. I.
It was in there. It's, I'm not able to open it though. That, that's another conversation, drop logs.
That's for another day.
I mean, it's hard to tell on the site plan. I would say they're probably not planning on selling out of the creamery's base itself because it doesn't, it's not parked.
Oh, no, you're right. Because that was basically for workers.
Yeah. So they have like a, next to it, they have a farm kitchen.
Yeah.
And they have a farm store and cafe, so I would.
Okay.
I would guess that that's probably where they're going to sell their products.
And I envisioned it something like, um, you know, Cracker Barrel, where you go in, they have that, like that retail space here, and then you go around the corner.
Right.
Where the restaurant, that's kind of what I envisioned that whole kind of thing.
Probably.
Just kind of from the drawing there. It's connected, but it's kind of like two.
We've done almost nothing with the site plan yet, so.
Okay, all right.
We, we're not, we have a lot of work to do on this, I think. Um, let me review what, let me review what Tammy's saying. She, she initially said, I, I think for times, you know, maybe you go, just add one more space to the museum and maybe one to the cafe. She said, nevermind, that, that worked. But I would add one more spot to the, to the workers.
But when you talk, when you look at some, some local response to a public, or some, some.
He has that, um, he had that in a new plan, he sent me, that's not this one. He had a new, a, a new plan that had our new parking ahead. Oh, it is? I don't think. Oh, yeah, he does have it, yeah.
That's, that's, we can. Especially if they have good curb, everybody's going to stop on the one can. You go to St. George, you got to stop and be in the curb.
If we need to have a called out and a parking people that they need to have. RV and trailers arguing about it.
One more time.
He included, he, we asked, or we told them that we were required in hotels to be RV and trailer parking, and then he included this. RV and trailer parking in his site plan for, um, for this whole thing, and that's just saying, should we require, should we have something in the parking table? For RV and trailer parking to make it a requirement?
About how, that's a tough.
You, you're, you're gonna have, I mean, look at what's coming into the valley all the time, right? But the, the nature of what we're looking at here, we're telling you, you're gonna have something for sure.
I mean, it was just their own. We didn't add it to the parking table, he just added it to the site plan on his own. For his progress.
Which. I wouldn't think that they would, for that reason. This is, I hope this doesn't sound wrong, but I'm gonna say it anyway. What I, what I, what I fear happening is, so we're, we're making it agriculture tourism, right? So, and we're trying to keep open space. I understand there's some development gonna be there, and we need to adjust for parking, but what I really hope we don't get into is a huge parking lot. That, that, I kind of think that defeats the purposes of that agriculture tourism, but I also understand that we need parking, right? So, that's.
Again, the hardest part is stepping away from this one project I have, building a code for all. Because, I mean, I keep thinking, oh, well, hell, there's nowhere on either road next door, you wouldn't want to pull off either, but it's not just this, it's.
Yeah, if they pull off the road, it's gonna be ugly, I can see that. Oh, yeah, I think we gotta.
Maybe your tumble is four way over.
So, do we want to touch on, is everybody all good, good with the parking? Do we want to add a couple more in spots?
I have a question about the reception center parking. I'm having a little bit, I'd like to have a little dialogue about four spaces per a thousand square feet, what would we envision?
How that, how big are?
Would a reception area be?
Yeah, 'cause unfortunately, on all the plans that we see, there's like dog dimensions of.
How, how big is our city reception building? Roughly, do you have any ideas?
Yeah, I think the site is.
It's like sixty by eighty?
Sixty by a hundred, or sixty by a hundred, yeah.
So we're.
And we park there, Scott, you're like, how? Usually have six thousand.
So six thousand ought to be.
We don't have nearly.
We only have twenty-four parking spots.
And I mean, I mean, we've seen, we've seen the city's parking lot for all the time when there's events going on, I mean, it's, it's full blown.
The good thing about out there, though, is there's plenty, I mean, you can go around and.
Yeah, so, and saying, unfortunately, people park, but parking lot fills up quick, and that would only be, at that level, we'd only be playing four spots, so at that.
And if it's, if it's a small, and it's, and they just be small events, it won't be anything, I don't know.
Weddings and things like that are pretty, pretty amazing how many people are gonna have.
So, when you, you put that, Amanda, when you put that in there, was that something that, that we've talked about, is that what we're currently at, as this?
Yeah, I just probably what our current standard is.
So that is our current standard?
Yeah. All of these are, all of these that are written in here are our standard in all our other zones.
In court, because I think we need to be consistent in what we're doing.
And again, it's one of this.
We have fifty, fifty, hey, parking spots out there? At the event center?
Okay, you got fifty now?
I guess they can only do, uh, out of town, ready, so everybody doesn't flock in.
Okay, so.
And this is, we can, when I get these dimensions and we get closer to the site plan, we can have that.
Right.
You know, talk about maybe perhaps we could have a more parking there and.
Would that be just time to address, like, are we parking two, or just to make sure that what they've kind of got's adequate, or at that point, is it too late?
Uh, at site plan, probably, you can ask, you can ask them, I mean, if it's not a requirement, they're not obligated to do it.
I agree, but it sounds to me like he's arguing. Thinking about it makes him, some sense.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he, that was one conversation, he changed it right away, so.
Okay. What's that?
He was open to that.
Okay, alright. Okay. Well, if this is our standard, and I think that kind of solved a whole bunch of questions, then that's, so let's, what about the community garden?
I'd throw them out, just a parking spot for every two or three plots, but I don't know. I think that's pretty heavy, so, I don't know, maybe, and maybe you do it off a square footage. If you, if you had twelve plots out there, you could get everybody back there in the morning before work, trying to hook the garden. Six, eight colors of these, but that's good. So I, I, I don't know, I think we need to allow for something there, but it seems like it's not gonna be very high number, and there's and it may be at times when some of these others are not gonna be visiting too, so.
You just hold it at the same one, one space per thousand, or maybe?
For the, the church is one thing, one space per thousand, creamery, two spaces per thousand. And you left it blank because you had no idea.
Well, we just have no parking standard for, it's not a use that we have right now, so it's gonna be.
I'm thinking.
Um, about the RVs, yeah.
We have something, we traditionally would.
Kami has commented on the RVs. Kami said, RVs will calmly, but requiring that will eat up his parking. I think he will have space available, available, since he will have tractors, possibly one large truck to deliver enough. He may have to count conditional parking for neighbors.
So, well, I think. So, community gardens, should we just, I mean, are we talking one per thousand square feet, is that adequate?
I think we'd have to at least have something in case we had something like this come in that lets, the vast majority of their purpose was to have community gardens. If we don't have something there to require parking. Kind of thinking about a community garden, it's in a community, so people are really gonna drive there? But it's a little different where it's in the side, if it's a tourism spot, because if you did it around a neighborhood, the department that drives there, you know, lots of.
But unfortunately, this is not in the neighborhood.
Kami's comment was, community gardens make the same as under three, headings it, two spaces per thousand square feet. Headings in and out link has two with extra across the street, which needs to work. There are two spots.
Two spots, so she's, she's staying for both of them, two, two spots per thousand.
Yeah, two spaces per thousand square feet.
And I'll give you a perspective of a thousand, so it's about fifty by twenty. This room is, to the entrance, is about fifty, and it's a little over twenty, twenty would be from that wall to where the heating is, so. That's a thousand square feet of shared garden, so.
That's a lot of weed, you hope. So I think two would be adequate.
Two would be, I think two would be adequate.
That fair recommendation? Two per thousand.
For both.
For each. For both, and, okay, two per thousand on both of those.
We wanna, uh, have it say zoo, or just want to do a thing like?
I, I, I'd kind of have to agree with Tim on this one, when you say zoo, that gives you a whole totally different. So I would just go with any farm.
The other?
However, you, you know, some people would argue about mules, and they still fit in bed.
Well, wow.
I just want to clarify that one. That's not a zoo. So is everybody good with that parking section?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then on to the definitions, um, for agritourism, for the agricultural tourism definition, the part that I maybe don't understand or don't agree with is, those that means they operate during more than six consecutive or non-consecutive days per year, provide agriculturally related, and in some instances, non-agriculturally related products, and that is that attract numbers of the public to the farm or retail, blah, blah, blah. Um, I don't, I guess I don't know why it's only six days.
I was gonna say, would it be more like six months, or that's just.
Six days a year? So it seems like.
So they're, they're saying they have to, is that saying they have to have some kind of an operation going on for six consecutive days?
Or is it six?
Where, where did this come from?
This came from Summit County, this was there, this was there.
So this, this to me gets into like a farmer's market type thing for five or six days through the summer or something, and I don't think that's what we're looking for. I think we're looking at least ninety days or longer for this, if, if we feel that it needs to be part of the, like, this definition.
Matt, what was the council's thoughts on that? Did they have it?
They haven't, yeah.
They haven't seen it yet.
I mean, they've seen it as much as you guys have in the work sessions, so, that's, they'll see it tomorrow.
No, it doesn't make sense to me, it's, you know, six consecutive in days, it would be more like consecutive in minimum weeks, with that.
I think Tim's right, I think, like, if you had, say, Saturday, summer, if you had one, one, and then it's not looking like, I think, he's had the right idea.
So.
The verb is gonna clarify what.
So, I'm gonna defer back to you, to Vermin, Amanda, when you, you've obviously had the time to think about that, how would you rewrite that?
Honestly, I would like to get rid of that, the whole sentence.
That's.
I don't know that we need to define it, I mean, I feel like if we get to a point where they're only operating six days a year, then we'll probably have to.
They're not.
They're not gonna spend those.
Put the effort in, and they're not gonna put the infrastructure in, if they're not gonna utilize it.
I just, I think it's unnecessary, I don't, I don't think someone's gonna be able to operate for six days.
Would you maybe just tell them, operate for more than six months, and just put, they provide, I believe, hopefully guided, and if someone sees the line, they probably should get rid of that.
Yeah, I'd just get rid of the timeline.
Yeah, 'cause if you go to that last, that last sentence where it says, consumer direct sales of farm products may include but not limited to open air or farmer's markets, or on-farm produce, produce and stand.
Yeah. It was fine, if they want to have a farmer's market on the.
It, it, that's allowable in that, in that.
Yeah, I mean, we do it for all, it was like, we do it for the Summit County parking ride, we do that for.
So just get rid of the timeline there, get everything, just take the time off, and do the rest of the sentence. Okay, so where, where?
So I'm cutting out, operate during more than six consecutive or non-consecutive days per year, so I would say they provide agriculturally related.
I originally did not like the part of, and non-agriculturally related products, until I went further and read in the definition of the non-agricultural products, which says that they are in some way promoting or related to.
Yeah.
And so I changed my stance on that, but initially, I rascled up a little bit when I saw that, but with the definition, it clarifies it.
Promotional stuff for, for them, I mean, they sell already, like.
If you, if you're at the cafeteria, and you got karma there, you have to buy a karma, right? It's not produced there, but it's agricultural.
That's right.
You guys gotta put it in perspective. Okay, so if we gear into that, are we good with everything else, that and that section, or in that? Then we move on to creamery.
Yeah, I took Kami, but it here, and she did that, there was something I wrote here, but she added on to it, somebody did. Oh, I said butter and cheese, and she said, maybe milk products, so, that's some change on that one. Um, community garden, Tim had a good definition for this one, but I started to write down.
You want me to read, go Google it?
Yes.
Well, is the grandma for you?
Yes.
A community garden within the AT two is a piece of land that that's cultivated by a group of people, usually in individual plots. The gardeners are responsible for their own plots, and the produce they grow belongs to them. That's it. And they didn't put, they have to park in the stalls. No, I don't know, I just took and pulled out a shop, and it was black, and I said, oh. It's open for.
So, so there it says, a piece of land that is cultivated by a group of people. We're gonna add what Tim says here, or?
Yes. No, I'm certainly like that.
So you two's already had some conversation, even going what that's gonna look like?
That was as far as I got, I was listening.
Yeah.
Honestly, when, when she didn't say, can you slow down and read that more?
You gotta talk the whole thing.
We're moving on.
I was like, I was being interrupted.
Let's just make him write it down, and I'll cover it. I like the way you think.
I'll hand this to you if you'd like.
I, I think I got it now.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, so is that gonna be the whole definition, or are we just going back down into developed activity, developed activity center, also, that's next?
That's the next one.
Okay. Comments? Green belt? No, it's not the green belt.
I think green belts, just like we stated in the work session.
Farm tour, agriculture tourism. I'm gonna get the house here with that one. Anybody? Bill? We got rid of the zoo out of the petting farm?
Yes.
You know what? When it, when that first come up, and I was thinking, very first thing that came to mind was incipio. Right? That there, that dairy queen, or whatever, not dairy queen, whatever it is, but that sucker, there is always people over there looking at them like. But that could be a zoo, cuz there are some animals in there that I've never seen on a farm before. Yeah, yeah, so I said that's, that could officially, can, if that was the case, we'd have to add zoo back here.
No animals.
No animals.
No wolves, all right.
No zoo was just.
Okay, um, product ever called. On the rest of that page, is there any other corrections that anybody has much to bring up? Vermin, did you want, did you get the petting?
Oh, is that right? Peaches are a combination of domesticated farm animals that are domesticated enough to feed. That I popularized.
Uh, or dog style.
Oh, dog style.
Dog style, dog style.
That's right.
I'm just telling you, I think electric fans, green animals, that's part of the real life experience.
From turnip fires.
Right?
Well, it's like when you.
Tammy would agree with me. She would agree with me. It's like what?
When you go to the fish aquarium and they say do not touch the fish. And some electric fences that are also.
Okay, yeah, with that, we probably need a motion.
Yes.
Okay. So, well, did you change under product on agriculture with Cam?
Oh, I think I did. I did.
You did have Summit County. Already just.
Yeah, it's changed. I didn't highlight it. I'll highlight it for the.
What was that?
Thought it was not agriculturally related. It said, it said Summit County.
Yeah.
The other one says that they can demonstrate for Summit County, cuz I didn't know. It's essentially it's saying that they can sell things from other farms and I thought we should allow those offerings from the other farms in Summit County.
So with that, now I'm thinking about it, um, use activity agriculture related, do we wanna get rid of zoos?
Oh, yeah.
In that portion too?
Yes.
They went up petting farm.
Yeah.
Describes the zoo.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay.
I think here the zoo here, that's a whole.
That's a whole.
Hopefully, there's a whole different group of people out there discussing. Okay, everybody good with the changes? You've got all of them, Amanda?
I got them all.
Okay, I wanna entertain a motion. Oh, somebody's gotta be great.
I vote we approve, uh, this zoning as discussed with, uh, those edits to move on to this.
You got that, Cory?
Yeah.
Okay. Intervene a second. A second. Okay, so we have a motion on a second. All right, I'll vote. Sidney. So that's four of us. Four eyes. Okay.
Thanks Tammy for some.
And thanks Tammy for some good input.
All right.
All right. Okay, so next on the agenda, public hearings regarding consolidating and ending allowed uses in section fifteen dot three zero of Kansas City Municipal Code. Would you like to like this?
Um, so the history of this is what, um, before I got here, they had been working on the parking table and Natalie had, my predecessor had put together a consolidated parking table meant to take away all of the, each zone has the parking standards within the zone. She had proposed to put a table into the allowed use table that was a second table with just the parking standard, uh, similar to how this looks, the allowed use table looks. Um, I worked on that with the planning commission and the more that we talked about it and worked on it in the works, a couple of work sessions, none of us were really it didn't, it didn't make sense to all of us. So I think over the years, um, I have decided that I kind of like the parking standard within each of the zones. I think it works well and every other city that I've seen does it that way as well. So in my opinion, I think if we need to work on the parking table, it's to eliminate some of the duplicated uses, um, that are in the, the use table and then add parking standards to the uses that have no parking standard, which there's quite a few. So that's what I've done in this document is I've gone through, I've highlighted all the uses that don't have parking standards in any of the zones that they're allowed in. And then I have, um, I've edited down to consolidate what I think needs to be consolidated. So.
So just, so, so just for some clarification, so on this first one where it says, uh, residential uses, household living, um, you highlighted accessory structure unoccupied.
So, yeah, so this was at the very bottom of the allowed use table.
Okay.
Um, under page eleven, you can see it there.
Oh, so you're just bumping it up.
So I moved it because of, it's under accessory uses under that page. And it has accessory structure occupied, which is only allowed in the eight forties zone. And it's already listed in the residential uses and then it has accessory structure unoccupied. So I just moved it up to be there, but that's an example of what I've done is I went through and made sure that we're not duplicating things, which there's quite a bit of this in the allowed use table. And then, and then also done through to highlight things that need to have these standards.
So if we just have the dwelling unit because it falls onto the other dwellings, right? So you didn't need desks.
Yeah, I, yeah.
It's a repeat of this.
It's already defined.
Big story.
Under, it's single family dwelling.
Okay.
I, it didn't need, it didn't need to have a, a separate use. And it doesn't have a different definition, so I think it can be combined. Um, town home is the same as multi-family. So I just got rid of town home because I don't think I can explain what that is. Um, I don't know. Is this how you guys wanna go through it? Do you wanna just do each? Or do you wanna, or do you wanna do this? This is a long document and I don't think we're gonna roll this night.
I, I would agree. We're, we're, I'm, you kinda got a six thirty kinda hard stop.
Yeah, so that's what I thought. I thought we could just go over and do some tonight and carry it over to another tiny man. Under group home. Oh, I just combined, they have three definitions, elderly and disabled. So I just combined both of those and they all have the same, they were all permitted in the same zones.
But there's no parking standard.
There's no parking standard though, so we need to come up with one for that. Oh, wait, no, I said there's no.
No parking standard, no separate definition.
It makes you.
So it starts here, so it's this one right here.
I'm gonna make sure, cuz I think I might. Yeah, it's part. Group home is part already, so, um, what I was saying under these other two is there's no, there's no separate parking standard for elderly or disabled.
So we're good to combine.
So just combine it.
Okay, does the parking standards are all the same for all of them, right?
It just doesn't have a separate definition, so if you look at the definitions, there's just one under group home. So I figured it didn't need to set three separate uses. Um, for church, I just allow it into the tourism zone, cuz it legally has to be in every zone. Um, civic club, cultural, that one. Um, there are different definitions that's, uh, under, there's different definitions for civic club versus cultural civic services, which is the one below it. So we need to design, we need to decide if they can be combined. Um, and then if we are combining, I just put that it should be added to the ECC to match what was already allowed under cultural civic services.
So.
I can read you the definitions.
Go ahead, yes, let's just go ahead. Thank you. You're reading mine here. What's the?
That's interesting, the civic.
What's the definitions?
So civic club is a building or use other than a church or school operated by a nonprofit association or organization for social, for terminal, political, civic, or film profit purpose, which may include meeting hall and cooking and dining facilities for largeers that should not provide overnight lodging.
So the daughter of the pioneer building that comes to mind, that would probably be under civic, right?
What was that?
Maybe. Cuz it's, it's a state affiliated organization. So yeah, it can be branches, lodges, or chapters of national or state affiliated organizations. So I would think that the D P.
Yeah, that was one of the, one of the things that I could even come up with.
And then cultural civic services is a building primarily used for the public, nonprofit display of art, historic or cultural artifacts.
Like our building?
It'd be all of it.
Can you read that one one more time?
A building primarily used to the public, nonprofit display of art, historic or cultural artifacts.
So you're asking, is it?
I'm asking if you wanna combine it or if they're only separate.
No, I think that would combine. Just like.
And we can choose a definition that we like from the two and just leave the other one.
We don't, I'm thinking, I'm going back to keep them.
Yeah.
Take those both.
Yeah.
It actually would fit both because they have all the artifacts.
That's why I think it could be combined. Where, so culture civic center, so I, from what you're reading, I'm just saying like that is a museum, right? That would be like a museum where we're displaying art.
That's what it sounds like.
Right?
For the public, nonprofit display of art, historic or cultural artifacts, but we also have a separate definition or museum. Um, because that's its own use.
Well, it's interesting because the civil club is more the organization, not the serving builders.
And then museum.
Yeah. So.
Let's say the lion, lions club, you said it's a building.
A museum is a depository for collecting and displaying others having scientific, historical, or artistic value.
So one is a nonprofit, well.
The one that all be, that all be combined.
Can we combine that in there?
We can do anything we want.
I mean, I mean, that would, that would be so similar. I don't understand why we'd have a separate.
Why we would have a separate one for that, right? I think that could, that's.
So then my suggestion would be to hear of these two for the civic cultural and just that museum.
The D P could fall right out of the museum, right?
We can, yeah, we can steal the definition from one of those and add it to museum, so maybe all encompassing.
So that's, where do they allow that?
Museum is.
Switched them three.
No, they're not. Um, it's just those three.
Museum would be allowed on summer series. Uh, the only place, actually, they're all the same places. It's, museum is allowed in the exact same places that cultural civic services are all.
But they're all the same places, that would make sense.
But civic club is allowed in more zones.
Civic club.
Because the, the club doesn't necessarily have to be. Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be a building per se, it's like.
So in the code, all the definitions are there in the code?
Huh?
Cuz that, that's, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do more.
Yeah, and I know, and you are, you're doing awesome. Could have, if we was to.
I haven't had it for three, right? Century living. This home.
This is civic club, it's not opposed to being against.
Assistive living are still nursing.
That club seems to be really different then. But I, I feel like the cultural civic services museum would be the same.
Question, Matt, if like, so the political parties, where do they meet?
Probably at the school.
Like at the school?
But I think that has something to do with how small they are and how limited number of places.
Places, yeah. Cuz I was thinking then, they met, they met here two weeks. What's that?
Never I live in the schools.
Cuz I, I know they've met in like city buildings at times.
Um, I think they actually tried to avoid city buildings so there doesn't act or show like cities. It's supporting one political party or, I think there's some, some avoidance of that, which makes sense.
So like when they have their, what's this, is it rotary club that you think you need? What's the group that, not smokes the rotary club, but.
There's a lion's and rotary and D P. There's several clubs.
Like Kevin Howard.
You could probably include Boy Scouts and American. You, I, I don't know, you could go. I don't know, you could go.
Yeah, we're. Just trying to figure out.
I support.
Why, why the museums are separate and then. Obviously, there was a reason they were separate. The museum was separate. I just don't want to. Well. Put it, put that in like a civic club, where?
Why must, why might I say that museum is more of a civic club, it's not necessarily.
Right, no.
So. I don't know, they seem different.
I, I would, after thinking, I would agree.
But. But I'm kind of thinking that. Someone you could focus on.
Agree, so.
I don't know, you could probably, permitted uses and and we, we usually do that as a cultural training, but I think that wasn't the right to do.
Yeah, I don't know if we can like civic club and cultural civic services. It's a different enough. But I don't like my question.
So we'll go back to the.
Is that civic club, even have residential or kinds of places where that, for cultural civic services? Is more just a cultural. Right, so that's why that, that makes more sense to me, to keep those, keep those separate.
So don't, you're saying not combining civic club and the culture?
I wouldn't.
So. So if you're thinking that it would be more, it would be more amusing to use the culture civic services and like museum.
Those two seem to not be that good. What, do the, does the museum have the exact same as cultural civic services?
Uh, let's play some more. At the cause of for collecting and displaying objects.
Yeah, there was only one.
Having scientific, historical, or artistic value.
They have the same except for maybe agricultural tourism.
Yeah, and I, I just added that, because we were allowing it for this new zone, so always, if we want to combine those two, then always make sure whatever we combine.
I think it makes more sense to do those two. Because the civic club can meet anywhere.
Yeah.
Then I would prefer in some cultural civic services, that I would just say museum. Because that makes more sense to me. I don't know what a cultural civic service is. If I didn't have a definition.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I just want to combine with the civic.
Then I will just get rid of the cultural civic services completely. Delete the definition. Are you guys okay with that, or do you want?
I, I.
Which definition do you like better, that one or the museum?
I would. Read the museum one more time. I think that covered everything.
A depository for collecting and displaying objects having scientific, historical, or artistic value.
What was the definition for the cultural civic services?
A building primarily used for public nonprofit display of art, historic, or cultural artifacts.
Oh, and that's nonprofit. Museum couldn't be for profit. But they just still have two different definitions.
So if I, if, if we have a museum, if you're a museum.
I don't know that that would be something that I would necessarily get potentially to, if I was doing a design plan approval. If I would quiz them on whether they're nonprofit or not. If they just wanted to put a museum in. I think it would be the same to me, whether they were nonprofit or.
So if they're, if it's a nonprofit, say, I don't know, the Holocaust, we got a traveling, and they want to set up shop here for a month. They were going to have this in this building for a month, in the city, in the city building on the state. And they charge you five bucks a head, and you go in and see this exhibit. So i- is that, is like an exhibit different than like what we're talking about? Here, and does that take it out of the nonprofit area?
I mean, I would, I would give them a temporary business license and. I probably would. I probably would steal a parking standard from whatever is closest to what they're doing.
Like the Wincston, right? Because that probably would.
I don't, I, it, it would be dependent on what they were doing, but I would. Whatever they're, if it's museum-like, I would steal the museum parking standard, give them a temporary business license.
I see why this has been struggling.
As far as nonprofit versus for-profit, wouldn't matter.
Does that matter?
I don't think you guys would care if they came in for a site plan approval, whether they were nonprofit or not. It doesn't change anything if they meet the requirements.
Because they're both, they're all in that commercial, right?
Yeah, if they meet the requirements of the zone, then.
Whether they're profit or nonprofit doesn't matter.
As far as, as far as like approving a building to go in for a museum. I mean, we didn't ask when High Star was putting their museum in, whether they were nonprofit or for-profit. They're not there. Nonprofit. I don't think it's even in place yet. I don't think it ever went in. The building, I guess.
Yeah, never again, it's gone, so.
So nonprofit.
They wish it was for profit.
Nonprofit, not for-profit.
Yes, that's true.
Some of the for-profits end up being non-profit. So I, I, I'm, I would still, I would get rid of the culture civic services, that one.
Yeah.
I, me personally, I think I would use the museum definition.
Just leave that out, those.
That's the nonprofit, so that doesn't make a difference between the two, because that seems to be the only difference.
Yeah.
Allowed use, the boxes for the allowed use are different.
It's only different because of the agricultural tourism. That I added in there, because we're allowing it, we're allowing museums in that zone, so I just put the P in there. That's the only, right, they're the same zone, otherwise. Is it? No, it's not. They're the same.
Yeah, there was museums, museum really got forked. Well, we're leaving the civic club, we're leaving that.
Oh, yeah, civic club, we're not.
That was actually. So the one below, we're going to, we're going to eliminate the one below. Just put that whole thing in the museum portion.
Just adding a few museums.
Yeah, we, I think we could say not giving the civic club one now, it's way different.
So then I will just delete the, the allowed, the red P in civic club that I combined. I'm not going to do that, because it was, it's not permitted there now. That's what, when I was going to combine it, I added.
Yeah.
That.
Because you was going to combine.
So what is on that?
Fair enough.
So do we need a parking standard for those?
Um, there's no parking standard for either use, so yes.
But. If you have a civic club that meets in somebody's house, you are not, what?
Yeah, how do you, like a DDP building, how do you determine how many parkings?
Well, that's why some of these news ones are weird, maybe because you're not, I don't know, I mean. Some of them would come in for approval, I would think, but then others wouldn't, I mean, they would just have that meeting.
Right.
I mean, if you're just doing it as a one-off meeting, you're not going to have anything for it, for a meeting.
It was big on the bunker, the one, from the bunker, cities one night and work, give me one night. I wouldn't ask you. Sorry.
I would not say. We're using that as an example.
Yeah, we're teaching.
It's a stretch.
You'd have to go to no. I'm not, I'm not going.
Pretty non-profit. Like DDP.
Right. Yeah, they have no parking.
Well, there's enough parking there, I've gone.
I'm just saying that.
But right, there's not official.
Yeah, the parking, they're passing the off street.
Right.
So we're talking about a building exclusively for this purpose.
Essentially. It'll look tense.
Would likely never go in, but yeah, if we want to have it being allowed use, we need to have a parking.
So, so if the bunker people get together and decide you make a building.
You aren't in the bunker.
Then this park, then this parking structure would go in.
Yeah, if we have it in this.
That's, that's what we're talking.
If it's in this table, it needs to have a parking standard.
Alright. Yeah. Moving on.
Well, we need a.
Well, we need a parking standard, so we don't get to move on.
Not moving on.
I thought we moved, I thought we adopted, we was just going to go with the museum parking standard.
We're talking about civic club right now. Which is the one that we weren't going to change.
Suckers, that one we're not changing.
But it doesn't have a parking.
But the fees are just for, for minimum, you don't have a, so on this list.
Do we have any recommendations from?
I mean, you could do what we do for museum, which is.
I would think a civic club group would probably have more part, or more sporadic, heavier parking than a museum.
Than a museum.
You could do what we do for our church, is one space for a thousand.
Oh, oh, if you, so if they build a building and they come in, we have to do that, because you got one, one space for a thousand. Is that what you?
I mean, I'm just telling you what, what that is, what similar parking standards are.
So the DDP building would need four of those seats. Because it's not that big.
A museum is one space for two thousand.
Oh.
So we could actually maybe even park on the road.
I, I think that would be pretty gentle with that, and I think, I think that one for two thousand.
I'd see. So we're, we're going to go through. Make these changes, and then after we get to Holy Vision, then we're going to go, we get a chance to go back through and say, hey.
Yeah, we're going to review that.
Alright, I like that thought. Because if you're. So. I think this balance a lot harder than. Mortuary, we're not messing. That's a given. Is this, is this becoming a two-step thing, where we identify it here and then we go back and address the individuals for parking standards?
I'm going to have to, once we do this, yeah, once we do this, then I'm going to have to, I'll edit all of this, and then I'll have our parking standard, and then I'll have any definitions that we're changing and adding, so it's going to have a, a ton of pages to.
And I, I'm just wondering if we get to fall down, try and do it all at the same time.
We have to do, we have to go through it, I don't know how.
We have to go through it and we have to become a standard. We don't have to, but you now, you say you've got to add a parking standard, so now you've got to go to that standard and revise it, and it becomes part of it. And then, then you've got to review that.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, we're just having to make the, a lot of these already have parking standards.
Yeah, we just have to go through the ones, especially the ones that don't come up with parking standards.
Because she's just.
I'll put all that together in a, in a big draft with all the changes that we talked about, and then you guys can just go through it, that should, that one should be a quick meeting, just to go through and be like, yep, this this makes sense, this works. So, but in order to get to that point, we have to have a parking standard to put in there.
Okay. Go on. Okay.
Agricultural farm, animals, and livestock. Um, I. Um, yeah. I, I don't know what to do with this one.
Well, we just created its own, so we.
So under the same people, we have farm animals, livestock, we have agr- it was agricultural, and then we have a separate use for farm animals and livestock. I don't know, I combined them because they were permitted in the same areas. And then I wrote, probably doesn't require a parking standard, it may not be necessary in a table, because they have a point system in the code. Meaning we have a point system for livestock animals on property. So I don't know why we would need this called out here, and we're not, there's no sense in having a parking standard for it, easily parking.
So.
And each section of the code has a point system for how many animals you're allowed to feed.
So the creamery. No parking standard. So, so the creamery is in that new zone that we just created, right? We do have a parking standard there, right?
Now we do.
Okay. So.
Yeah, we need to figure out this harder problem, we need to figure out the first one.
Okay, so. Give me a definition of that building, what does that look like?
It's not a building, it's just a use. It's just. Agricultural is a broad definition. The tilling of soil, raising of crops and animals, grazing, or gardening, and other similar uses for private or commercial purposes. And then food farm, animals, and livestock. Animals other than household pets that may, where permitted, be kept and maintained on private property, not to produce other animals. So.
So does this.
To me, this doesn't need a parking standard.
Because this falls into your point system, I would use, right, so does this, anywhere fall into your point system?
Yeah, each, each zone has a point system for how many animals you're allowed to feed.
So you're just wondering, do we combine those agricultural and farm animals, livestock, or do we keep them separate?
Well, I did combine it because they're permitted in the same areas, I don't think we need to have
adult.
Two different definitions for them. But then I figured one step further, and I think that it doesn't even need to be in this table, in my opinion.
I can't see any reason why I wouldn't.
We're not partnering it.
No.
And it's already, it's already placed in the zones by how many animals you're allowed to feed for your half acre.
Am I misunderstanding the use of this table? So, tell me the use of this table, before I agree or not over it.
Well, the use of the table is to tell you what's allowed in each zone.
Okay. And so.
But then, this is meant to be a reference, so you're supposed to go here to say, am I allowed to do this in my zone, and then you go to your zone to see what your parking standard would be.
But it's not just for parking standards. It's for, yeah. Permitted uses.
It's for permitted uses. But by and large, everything in here would have a parking standard. Like, I can't think of something else in here that wouldn't have a parking standard. But I don't know, I mean, that's, that's just my opinion, and that's up to you guys. Yeah, I mean, it's not necessary to have a parking standard unless a feedlot or auction, corral livestock business, I think. Yeah, I mean, it's not necessary to have a parking standard unless a feedlot or auction, corral livestock business, I think.
Well, I would say leave it in the table, because it isn't, it isn't a use. So it's an easy reference to keep it in the table.
So do you? Wow. Do you just lump all of that into agriculture industry?
I know you guys, I haven't cut to it.
Put all of that into agriculture industry, again?
An agricultural industry business involving agricultural products and manufacturing, packaging, treatment, sales, storage, including the not only to food packaging and processing plants and other similar uses as defined by pending permission of the C U P. The definition does not for pot farms, agricultural business, or memory.
So they aren't.
Or commercial standard, do you?
That's right.
I mean, I guess we don't necessarily need a parking standard for it. I just think it's weird, but.
See, I, I I think we need it. There's gotta be a parking standard if you have like an auction. There's gotta be a parking standard for that, right? If you have livestock auction.
You're talking about like a one-off event, though.
No. If they have been a bill, they're.
Built an auction bar.
Put an auction.
That would fall under agricultural industry, in my opinion.
And see, that's kinda where I'm trying to figure out what, what all gets combined into this this section, cause where we have agriculture industry here, you're, here it says no, you, oh, we don't have a parking standard, you gotta create a parking standard, that's what you're saying? Or?
Uh, there's no parking standard for agricultural industry, there's no parking standard for obviously agricultural or farm animals and livestock.
And we need, I, I think agriculture industry, there should be a parking.
I mean, definitely for that one, I'm arguing that.
I think the first one, the end of this table is give someone a quick reference, like permitted uses inside, but now that the initial content is ever combined in two tables, and for one, or that for the usual ideas for all the things to say about the practice.
But what's the point of getting a table that doesn't have?
Just give people a quick reference of, oh, what's in this zone, and I wanna do this use. Kind of like I'm going through each zone, but it was less conversant, I always value that thought process.
But I think, I think we do need that with parking standard, if you have.
It's listed in there, that's what I think.
In that zone.
Cause you have it under use specific standards, so the very far right, where it lists all the code sections that it's allowed in, you're meant to reference that code section then to see the standards for that use, which are the parking standards. Or anything else specific to that use called out in the zone.
You go to that zone and the use is spelled out, it may not necessarily have a specific video file. And right, so. Like, why? So, um, you have an in-home business, you have a pantry parking spot, right? But if you make jam and sell it at the grocery store, it's very long, you need an pantry parking spot.
Yes. If you're in a commercial zone, setting up a business. If you're in a residential zone, setting up an in-home business, I require that you have one additional parking spot outside of your required parking spaces for your residential zone. That's under the A C U P.
But if you're only, you might be selling, if you're really for sale. You're not having any like busy in your own business.
They're still required to get a business license.
They're required a parking spot, you're saying, you know what's coming to their shop.
It's, they're all the same, it's all home occupations that cross that the exact same, so they have to have a parking space outside of their residential uses or the residential means for parking designated for whatever home occupation they're doing.
And that would be maybe for a work-related company, help me, or whatever.
Right. I mean, it could be for anything, if, there are home occupations that have people obviously come to the house. Like, um, somebody that does taxes.
Right.
And there would be a need to have an additional parking spot for that purpose.
So. I'm gonna make recommendations, and then you guys can agree or disagree. I, I like what you're putting together here, I think there's a lot of stuff that's duplicated here that we need to combine. Is there any way that you could give us a printout that has the definitions there, or are you just gonna give me the handbook and say whatever for yourself?
You want a definition for every single thing, okay?
Well, no, just the ones that were, that we have questions about, like, um.
So what is what we think of combining?
The ones that we're looking to combine, cause a lot of the questions that we're having are coming back to that, and if it's in the code, and I, I just need to look it up, just say, look it up. While we do your homework. Look it up, right?
I mean, yeah.
No, and I, I'm not trying to create any more work for you, that's not what I'm trying to do, but what I am trying to do is get a better feel for, cause I think you're spot on, I think a lot of this stuff, this parking standard or whatever it is can be um, condensed immensely. But it seems like most of our questions have to do with what is the definition, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So. Let it, let us take this and we'll look up, and we'll reference our code and look and see what the definitions are. So we can help eliminate some of the frustrations I see here, the frustrations in here, and it's not, and I'm.
I'm not frustrated.
I, oh, I, I know, I know, that's, that's kinda not what I'm saying, but I'm part of the things that we, I'm guilty, right, I should have been a little bit more prepared as far as definitions, cause I, I, I didn't look at it. I read through this and thought, okay, that makes sense, and that makes sense, and then once, when you read the definitions, it doesn't, it kinda changes the whole outlook. So.
Well, I initially jumped in thinking, yeah, anything we can do to consolidate, simplify is great. And then the more I dig into it and you look at the definitions, I think it makes me wonder, why were they initially separated? You know, do I need to know why they were initially separated before I make the decision to combine? That's my biggest concern is. I'm all about simplifying, but I don't want to have to create more.
Well, that's, yeah, I, I don't, kinda like you said, sometimes we oversimplify, and then we get trouble. Cause we're trying, I mean, obviously, you had a reason at some point in time, I don't know what that is. Or if this just was combined from several, and this is kind of what we've come up with. But I, I, after going through these, I, you're spot on, there are several in here that, this whole agriculture one, right here, I think we can condense. It's, part of it is just, where do we put that? And what was the definition we wanna use? Cause a lot of that will depend on whether we need a parking standard or we don't. Right? So. Let us, let's bring this up on our, let's table this. That'd be my recommendation, I'm obviously, I would, I would suggest that we table it, and let the commission here do a little better job of what we're supposed to do, and be a little bit more prepared. Um, now, personally for me, now I can see what you're after and how you're going about this. Um, I think we can be a little bit more prepared, give us a little bit of reading to do, but yeah, I think we can be better prepared. So we can actively, instead of relying on you to give us all the definitions, hopefully we can do some homework and take care of a lot of those questions that we have. Cause there's a lot of this stuff we're not even gonna mess with, right? And then you're looking at, I think, what probably you need to do. So, and that, that's just my thoughts. I think, I think we're, for me, now that I know what you're looking to, looking to accomplish, man, I think we can be better prepared, definitely a little bit more. You gonna do that? You gonna give me that? You're not gonna catch me outside? You're not gonna catch me outside in like flat tires or something? But that's my recommend, that's just my thoughts.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're flashing tires long ago.
If I go out there and I have a flat tire, this is gonna even be funny. Except for somebody that's, clicks my tire. Good thoughts?
Well. Yeah, I, I think I understand through this discussion now more what the intent of this table is. If it's really an allowed use table, so my, my question is, we just ran into one that we think doesn't require parking. But it's allowed use for this, 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 and this. So why would we take it out of the table just because it doesn't require parking?
Because it's already in the zones, it's already spelled out how many animals you can have in each zone.
Well, isn't, isn't parking already spelled out in the zones if we go do due diligence to get it all in there?
Parking's spelled out in zones.
So why do we?
I guess my confusion is why.
What's the difference?
We're a right to, we're a right to farm community, so we would never tell somebody that they couldn't have livestock if they had the appropriate amount of land for it. So I don't know why, number one, I don't know why it's called out, that it isn't allowed everywhere, I guess, is my first confusion, because we are right to farm, and then number two, I don't know why it's in here, because it's already spelled out in each specific zone, how many animals you can have by the point system. So, but I will say, like, to get hung up on this one, this is the only one that I'm proposing to not put in here, it doesn't exist in the rest of the twelve pages, so to get hung up on this one about, am I deleting uses from the allowed use table, I'm not, I'm only proposing one, but I don't think needs to be in there, but I'm not doing it anywhere else in this twelve-page document.
Agree, and you can go there and even see that, right? And this is, this is a tough one.
I hate to get hung up and, and how you guys think that I'm trying to delete uses, I'm not trying to delete uses, I'm trying to consolidate, make it make sense.
Doesn't.
And not be repetitive.
That is not what, that's not what I'm thinking, I can see what you're trying to do here, and I can s, the value that I can see is, is, yeah, has good value. I think kinda where, where we're kinda coming from is now we know what you're trying to do, I think we can better prepare ourselves. Cause if it's in a zone, and it, and all of that stuff's in there, I, I agree, why, why is it here?
That's just my thought, but I can totally appreciate keeping it too, like, I, that's just where, when I was doing this, I was like, I don't, this doesn't seem necessary to me, but either way, I don't, it, it doesn't bother me, it doesn't keep you up at night, so whatever you guys, whatever you guys feel comfortable with, I'm happy to do, I just was asked by the mayor to work on this, and it's what I thought.
I can, so personally, personally see why this is kinda been going on for a long.
It went on forever, and then I gave up on it, for some of those reasons.
But, but I also think that having come together and we've got a plan, I think we can accomplish well, granted.
This table has notoriously overlonged both staff and commission, so.
So, to help me as we do this, and we go about this task that Rex suggested, I just ran into, now I can't find it again. Cause these are, these are all under different headings, and then they're alphabetized based on the heading. So, we've got to find that, but I was just looking at banks, banking and financial services, for example. It's permitted in three line, three columns. It must have a parking standard because you haven't said you need one. Right? So it's already included in those sections that you referenced.
It's on page five.
Okay, good.
Top of the page.
Um. Okay.
Top of the page.
So, banking, financial services, permitted in three columns, under commercial. And the sections are defined, and it doesn't have a note saying that needs parking.
It means it's all parked, it's all parked correctly in, in the zones, so we don't have to do. So we don't.
And so we don't have to do anything for that. And the purpose of this is if you come and do a quick look at this, you can see that, oh, it's only allowed in this, these three columns. And.
Which is basically the commercial zone.
And these are the references to these, to the, uh, sections which define the parking. As well as many, many other things beyond parking. But parking, why has parking come up? Because there's a lot of other things there. So that's my question, is why is parking becoming?
Cause when we started this.
A specific issue on this combined table.
When we started this a long time ago, we found that there was uses that did not have parking standards. So, we're saying it's allowed, we need to go to the section and say, this is what parking requires, right now, we say that the, whatever is allowed, we go look at what's required, there's not a parking standard, so we have to figure out parking standard when somebody comes in to do something.
Like a bakery, turn up a name, there's allowed in.
That's how it popped up, but we need to, we're gonna have an allowed use. And we need to say what you have to do to do that allowed use, parking is one of the things you have to determine to do that allowed.
And this comes up so often. Every time I get a business license, I go to this table, I look to see if it's allowed in whatever zone they're in, and then I go click on the zone to check parking, and there's no parking standard, it happens to me constantly. To the point where I have now, I mean, I, when Rob was here, I was like, I don't know what to do, because I'm getting, I'm getting business licenses for things that I have no parking standards, so we would look through the code, look through the definitions, find anything that was similar, and forget that standard, but it's not, it's not a good way to do things. We need, we need to go through this table and make sure that everything that is in this table has a parking standard in the right zone, and and then also make sure that, I mean, whether or not we combine things, that's totally up to you guys, I think it makes, I think it makes it look better, I think ultimately, you know, you don't need three definitions for household pets, for example. Um, I mean, whether or not you need a parking standard for it, again, that's another one, I don't know, but.
So can I just ask a question? So when I'm doing my homework, which I need to do, and I'm looking up the definition and the sections, where is the best place for me to find that?
The definitions?
The definition and then the section. Or are they in the same place?
So the definitions are under fifteen oh two, and then the section where it's allowed, about what you mean? Should just be on the very right side, so it's clearer.
But where do I, where do I find that? I mean, first, it, I'm gonna do this, where's fifteen oh two? If I wanna find that, where am I?
It's just in the code, it's just under.
But where am I finding that?
You're absolutely correct.
Oh, you don't know what the code is, I'm sorry. Oh, we don't know what the code is, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm like, where, where, give me a step-by-step from the beginning, where do I start?
Okay, yeah, go to our website, just click on municipal.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was asking.
Sorry.
Municipal government, fifteen oh two.
Okay, so fifteen oh two will give you the definitions.
That's the one chapter you'll be doing.
Okay, and then all of those fifteen point oh six, fifteen point eleven, that's.
Those are all those elements.
Okay, okay, that's, that's.
So household pets would be another one similar to agriculture that we were just talking to about, also. So, but, but I guess my point is, don't you still wanna go if somebody comes in and says, can I have pet in this one or that one, don't you still want it on the table so you can look at it quickly and say, yeah, I have it. All of these are not available.
I mean, I would probably tell them that they can have it in any zone. Because why would you be able, if you have a residence and manufacturing zone. Right now, you wouldn't be able to have a household pet in your residential home.
Cause you're, you're, yeah, you're the planner and you know that, because you've got that background. It's sort of, you can all, I mean, you're allowed pets everywhere.
Well, I would allow pets, I mean, it, it should say probably residential, or I guess a household pets is enough of a defining word, I would look at the definitions to see how it's defined, but if they own a home in any one of the zones. Commercial, manufacturing, residential, whatever it is. I would come apart and deny them. Having a pet.
And obviously there's not gonna be a parking standard.
No. But.
Maybe if we, if we had that, ten parking spots for cats. Letting cats in the neighborhood.
It would increase the, it would increase the minds. That's what I think.
We're all, we're all on the same page.
Do, do people really come in and ask, do I have a pet?
People ask.
I think some of them should.
Livestock, all the time, chicken, horses.
Okay.
People ask about those concepts.
So I have a question about that particular thing, so say. You say we're a right to agriculture community, right, city?
Right.
So. If, if I have a place that used to have a horses on it, right, but I haven't had for years. I still don't lose that right, that. Providing, I mean, I, I can't, I can't.
Technically.
I can't build on my half acre, where my half acre that was open where I had a horse. I can't build on that and still, even I can still have a horse, right? But. I'll give you an instance, my neighbor travels, he's got a great big open backyard there that, but they had horses in there forever. Now it's just a like golf course or whatever you wanna call it, right? And if he sells that and somebody wants to put a horse back there, providing it's fenced.
It will have enough land, for my first question.
Yes, yes.
If it has enough land, it wouldn't matter, if it doesn't have enough land, then they said, well, I have horses.
That's where the point system comes in, you talked about.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would never, I would, personally, if somebody calls me and asks me, can I have a horse on my lot? I, I would ask what zone they were in, but ultimately, I would wanna know. To me, the most important critical piece is how much land you have, and then I would reference the point system. I wouldn't go to the allowed use table necessarily, but.
The right agricultural ordinance generally talks about the fact that if you move there and you live next to somebody that has livestock, you can't. You can't complain enough to get them to sell their livestock, cause you don't like the smell. You think that's a lot of leftover, right, that you put in the ordinance, it's not. If you're legal.
Okay. And it's in the definition.
Someone's right, no, it's not, it's in the order.
Pots.
No, we're, so. So as you're right to maintain your, so if something else, or they put a bunch of homes in there, it's like, you're like, can horses stay? Horses even.
But if he has mules, that's a whole different story.
No. Mules, I can't joke.
Well, you gotta look on the tables, mules are allowed based on my.
No. We have to get the point system and mules require three times more points.
But that only applies from common, after this ordinance, cause I had a complaint about it, I'm in town, it's. More than probably were allowed by his area, but I think he'd been doing it long enough that he got. You. All right. I did try him.
Okay. I'm reaching my heart, stop time. Is everybody okay with, oh, sorry.
No, we just have one minute until your heart stops.
Oh, no, I thought you said wait. So, do we need to table this? Close our public hearing?
You didn't open it.
I did, we opened it before, before that.
You opened this one?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you did?
Yes. So we're gonna close this public hearing. About consolidating and amending all these uses. Now. Is there any other planning and zoning business?
Well, take a motion, cause it's, it's a public hearing, so. So what you're doing.
Okay.
We need to motion to table it until.
Okay.
Okay, so I make the motion that we table this until next month, so that we can do some more research. On our, and we'll come in for you.
Excellent, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Um, all in favor? Now. Okay. Now, other planning and zoning business?
Um.
What's on the horizon?
Just. This stuff, everyday stuff. And then also I've been working, I think I told you guys that we got the, um, mapping technical assistance grant of the influence of some like county. Um, and we have selected a, um. What's the word?
Consultant?
Yes, thank you. A consultant to come in and, um, they're gonna work with each city, they're gonna work with the county, county council, and the public, um, to work on a a summary of, of our city center and what recommendations I have, so. That's gonna take the next year, but over the next year, it'll be that way, and you'll see them. I have some.
Okay.
I'm gonna lie, so.
Anything that we need to be on the horizon, that we can see is gonna be coming up?
Um. Yes, the next planning meeting. Potentially. I might have, um. Not a site plan approval, but, um. As, uh. I have a business owner that's looking to do something with his property and would like some opinions. Potentially a decision on, um, whether or not this is thought in his building could go above our thirty-two.
Would this be on Main Street? Would this be on Main Street?
Yeah. Thirty-five? Thirty-five.
Is this on Main Street?
Yes. Um, sorry, that was not summed up very well, but this is new, I was up today, so I'm still trying to figure out what to do with it and how I get a partial approval on that, but not a site plan approval, so. Trying to work through that. But that's coming.
Is there anything we can do to help you sites feel a little bit prepared? We will be prepared, now we know, and now I know what you want, I will be more prepared. If that's the case. We look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Done. We're done, done and done. Turn that off for just a second. Before we start talking about cats.